The Roanoke City Council.
Yeah, yeah.
Formal question for June 1st, 2020 is hereby called to order. And I want to let everyone know that participation will be by electronic communication pursuant to amendment 28 to House Bill 29, section 2.2 dash 37 oh eight point two. Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty as amended, ordinance number four seventeen oh three oh three two seven two oh. And resolution number four one seven oh four oh three two seven two oh. I will at this time ask our clerk, Ms. Suzie McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Osborne. Ms. Price.
I'm here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here and a quorum is present of. Is it five members here?
Yes, yes.
All right, all five are present by electronic communications and I declare that the quorum is present as permitted by amendment twenty eight to House Bill twenty nine, Virginia code section two point two dash thirty seven oh eight and fifteen point two dash fourteen thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Callahan. Just let the record reflect that Ms. Osborne and Vice Mayor Cobb have joined the meeting as well. So there are, you have a, the entire council is present.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Osborne, and welcome, Vice Mayor Cobb. All right, we want to have our leaders in the invocation followed by a pledge allegiance. Let us pray. You tell God, our Father, we come to you today thanking you for this another day that you have blessed us to see. Lord, we ask you now to guide and direct us as we, as elected and appointed officials go about the business of this city. Thank you for bringing us through a weekend when there was some frustration, at times chaos and what have you, but we thank you because you were present. We thank you for how you watched over and protected us throughout that process. And Lord, we continue to thank you for our first responders and all that you're doing because we recognize that this COVID-19 virus is still upon us, but we're trusting you to be there to put your arms up protection around us and protect us from seen and unseen danger. We thank you for how you've touched the lives of Vice Mayor Cobb's and Councilwoman Anita Price as they come through a time with their families. We pray that you will continue to give them strength as we go forward today. But we love you and we praise you. It is in your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Councilwoman Bestbitch has the flag. I'd like one to hold up and Councilwoman, lead us in the pledge.
A pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States of America.
United States of America and to their. Which it stands.
Under God.
In the people with liberty.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. All right, welcome everybody. Let me say this morning's meetings and briefings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel Three following the 2:00 PM session on Thursday, June 4th at seven o'clock PM and Saturday, June 6th at four o'clock PM and video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Each member of council has access through the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this proceeding. The city has provided the public with information to allow the public access to observe this regular session through live broadcast on RBTV, live streaming on Facebook and posted on YouTube. The city has provided a notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, May 28th, 2020. City staff, including the city manager, city clerk, city attorney and technical staff are present in the council chamber and are participating in this regular session. To facilitate the process today, to ensure that all council members and the public can follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion, to first state the member's name, then make the motion or second. At this time, I ask members whether they have any questions about this process. If not, I'll ask the city manager to advise if he has any comments. Hearing none, then we'll move right into actions, items for action. Excuse me a minute. There's a communication from the mayor requesting that council convene in a closed meeting by electronic communication means to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions and committees appointed by council pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven eleven, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting. I need a motion for this closed session.
June Osborne, so moved.
Chris Whiteboy, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes. The audio is not as strong of Madam Clerk. I don't know what can be done about that, but in fact it's breaking up on my end anyway, but the motion passes for this closed meeting. Now we have a communication from Councilmember Davis and I think there's an amendment associated with this.
Yes, I'll read the amended action. A communication from Councilmember Michelle L. Davis, Chair, City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter being the annual performances of the council-appointed officers and the process for selecting a city attorney for a term beginning October 1st, 2020 pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A1, Code of Virginia as amended.
All right, is there a motion?
Chris Whiteboy, I move.
June Osborne, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the motion passes. All right. The item listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring discussion, clarification, additions, deletions to the 2:00 PM agenda. Are there any items? All right, hearing none, we will go right into our briefings. And before the city manager makes his presentation, I ask that council members hold their questions. The presentation will have a break and at such break, I will ask each council member in alphabetical order for their questions and comments. And so at this time, I call on our city manager to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The first briefing is, as we are customary, customarily do with the budget approval process, is the budget study and this is, of course, a time in which we generally respond to any questions that arose during the public hearing regarding the budget and of course, we received certainly some, a number of comments regarding TAP funding and as of course, you all know, the budget that I proposed that is before you all includes level funding with for TAP and as well as actually they are currently pursuing some other funds in addition to the level funding. So I feel like that particular item has been addressed in the proposal as it's going forward and really we received no other questions that I think anyone from the councils indicated any follow-up regarding. This is also the time that we present for you all the kind of the longer range forecast for revenue versus expenditures. And this is just that kind of last opportunity to show you sort of what may lie ahead as we start to formulate budgets even beyond the FY21 budget. So at this time, I'm going to ask Amelia to come up and walk you through that and then certainly we can entertain any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good morning, Amelia.
Good morning. Mayor Lee and members of city council, as city manager identified, there is only one agenda item that we have for discussion today on the agenda currently, that being the five-year operating plan. The development of this plan is deemed a best practice during budget development each fiscal year and it is utilized to facilitate strategic planning and discussion for subsequent fiscal years. Similar to our capital improvement program, some of the fiscal challenges that we acknowledge, we acknowledge them in advance and to the extent possible, we make plans for closing any gaps that are revealed in those plans. On slide three, you see visually the five-year operating plan as it is currently developed. It makes assumptions regarding revenue growth as well as expenditures. And as you see at the bottom there, they're predominantly two percent for the expenditures. And we also have conservative revenue growth estimates of one to two percent for the estimates that you see listed there at the bottom as well. Those are applied to the revenue estimates as we start from a balanced fiscal twenty-one budget coming forward and they result in some negative variances during fiscal years twenty-two through twenty-five. As we move forward to slide four, we'll note that in the Commonwealth, it is legally required that we adopt a balanced budget each fiscal year and that is of course accomplished through revenue growth and that's either existing revenues or new revenue sources or as was predominantly the case for fiscal twenty twenty-one through expenditure reductions. This modeling allows for strategic continued recognition of priorities with conservative expectations for revenue growth in the next five years. We also recognize in the model unavoidable expenditure growth such as contractual increases. The result in four of the five years that you see modeled here is a negative variance from one point five million in fiscal twenty twenty-two to a negative six point eight million in fiscal twenty twenty-five. We will, of course, during the development of those fiscal years, bring them into a balanced status. However, the advanced planning is almost, well, always beneficial. Again, this modeling is a best practice for budget development. And as we again close the gap in those fiscal years, we are forced to either recognize additional revenues through revenue growth or new revenues or we are required to reduce expenditures. So we did want to take this opportunity to share the model with you, answer questions that you may have regarding the modeling and also receive your feedback as we continue, even though on the fifteenth, the budget is scheduled to be adopted. We will continue our work of modeling and looking at options for balancing subsequent fiscal years as we approach, which is not too far in the distant future, December, beginning another budget process and beginning discussions with you again. So we'd certainly like your feedback regarding the five-year operating plan as it's laid out before you today. I'll pause here for comments and questions.
All right, Mr. Bestbitch, you have any comments or questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, thank you, Ms. Merchant and your entire team and the city administration for keeping us well informed as to the picture going forward. And I especially appreciate your explanation of the variance in the outlined years that we're not going to end up in twenty twenty-five with a budget that is six point five million dollars out of balance. We will continue to look at the revenues as they come in and make whatever adjustments are necessary to the expenses. But the other thing I wanted to share, Mr. Mayor, is that it seems that sometimes there are citizens who think that if Roanoke City Council passes a resolution on some issue, that that carries a lot more weight than their own voices. And my experience is that has not really been the case. I think that it's important for us to ask our citizens to contact their representatives in Congress, our state senators and the members of the House of Representatives to urge them to provide additional relief for local governments. When Ms. Merchant talks about additional revenue sources, that is one that could be very important. But if we send a resolution from Roanoke City Council, it does not have the same impact as if they hear from hundreds or hopefully even thousands of our citizens saying, you must recognize that along with the businesses, along with the paychecks, revenue for local governments is very important and the federal government needs to step in and provide some relief for us for our, for our normal operations, not just for the additional expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I would say the same thing in terms of contacting members of the General Assembly and the governor regarding those issues. So I think that if we're going to be able to improve the situation in the short term, that is probably the fastest way that we can restore some of the cuts and at least maintain the revenue estimates that have been provided with the understanding that we don't know how long some of this impact is going to affect our revenues over the next months or even year or so. So I'm just appealing to the public to please help us get that message across to our representatives in Washington and in Richmond. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. I agree with you and I think we probably need, as a council in the city, need to do a bigger job informing our public as to what they can do and how to do it. Talk a little bit more about that and I think if we can get that momentum going, I think we'll get there. So that's, I agree with you and I think we need to, as we did this morning, talk more about that and inform our public how important it is that they become active and contact the local, not the local, but the state and federal representatives. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Good morning. Thank you, Amelia, for the update. Just one question, and I know that this is difficult to answer because there are so many unknowns, but as we look at this five-year operating plan, what are you all considering right now in terms of the anticipated impact of the COVID-19 economic downturn and what variables are going to be considered as we go forward? I know a lot of that's unpredictable right now, but I'm just interested to hear what you all are thinking about in that regard.
Vice Mayor Cobb and rest of city council, I would be glad to share with you probably more effectively in written format, some of the assumptions that we've made for individual revenues. Tiffany, if you would go back to slide three, we made some assumptions, as you see there, for just three specific local taxes that are identified there at the bottom for real estate, for personal property tax, for prepared food and beverage tax. More specifically, if we were to go into individual local taxes just for next fiscal year, we go as deep as monthly assumptions in terms of recovery of those local taxes compared to the prior year performance. So even greater depth from a monthly performance basis beyond just the fiscal year performance basis. And that information being informed by our colleagues across the region as well as industry-wide information that we're receiving to build those estimates. In terms of the potential growth, again, these are very conservative estimates based on performance that we've experienced following the prior recession and again, information that we're receiving from industry-specific partners as well as regional partners. But if you're interested in very specific monthly detail or the annual detail for specific local taxes, we certainly can provide you with that.
Thank you, and it just reiterates what Councilman Bestbitch was saying that this matter of relief is not just current year, but I would hope that we could advocate for some ongoing relief over the course of a number of years to help localities be able to support the essential work that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis.
Mayor Lee, at this time, I don't believe I have any questions, but I do look forward to seeing the rest of the presentation and appreciate again the work that's going on and specifically the advocacy that folks are doing. As we do recognize, Mr. Bestbitch said that local cities and counties are being affected by COVID proportionately to local businesses and so that's something that moving forward, if we're all going to come out of this, it is going to be important for our Congress men and women and our US senators to recognize and hopefully help with in the future. But thank you to the staff for all of this work and it is a constantly moving target.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I don't have any questions either. I do appreciate Councilman Bestbitch recommending that the general public get involved in our welfare and participate by contacting those far and wide at the state and federal level. I always think that's very important and I look forward to any ways that council can help organize that effort or inform that effort. And I look forward to creative ways that we can address our budget and continue to help it be robust and healthy as it was going into this situation. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Price, are you available?
Yes, and I have no questions, but I just concur with all the comments that have been stated by my colleagues that this is indeed a moving target and there's so many variables to take into consideration. And certainly extend my heartfelt thanks to Amelia and the staff that they have been able to get as much done as they have under such adverse conditions. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whiteboy.
Good morning. Yes, I just really want to thank Amelia and her staff also for doing what they do. Somehow they managed to stretch our dollars as far as they can possibly stretch them and they have done it very well strategically and so we have, you know, landed in a pretty good place so far. I do have one question about the stimulus dollars. I wonder if they ever came in or are they trickling in? Or are we getting any of that money that was promised to the localities and local governments? I may have missed something, but I don't recall seeing anything that specifically came in from those stimulus dollars. And I would say to our residents, don't forget to go and do your census if you haven't done it. Twentytwentycensus.gov, that is also a source of revenue for our locality. So those are the only two comments that I have, Mayor, and thanks again, Amelia, to you and your team.
Yeah, on the stimulus funding, there are two and then possibly three sources of funding currently. One of those was the CDBG and the ESG funding and those dollars have been received and you all actually took action recently on amending some of the plans that were necessary so that those dollars could start being expended. Some of those have already been spent actually because they were used in the housing arrangements to ensure that we had locations should any homeless individuals in our communities need to be able to isolate themselves in response to COVID. But there are other funds. So that first bucket of money, if you will, came in through the CDBG and ESG funds. So that has come in. The second pot of money is associated with the larger bill that actually sent money to the states and then the states in turn are expected to provide on some rationale, localities with funding. And Virginia did that, I think maybe two weeks ago, there was a correspondence that went out indicating that they would divide those dollars up. It was about six hundred and fifty million dollars, I think, across localities based on population. The city of Roanoke qualified for eight point six five million dollars in assistance under that program. And so actually, I believe, starting today is when they will actually start providing the actual funds to communities. And later on your agenda is the formation of the task force associated with recovery funds. And in part, that'll be some of what they'll be looking at is some of those dollars. Now, those funds come with understandably some fairly stringent strings, if you will, attached to them. So the eight point six five million dollars is really intended to directly relate to COVID expenditures. And so what we have to now do is kind of figure out exactly what does that mean? There is the possibility, along with those dollars, the state has the ability. There's another set aside inside those funds that went to the state that could also go again to localities. At this point, Virginia has not indicated whether they intend on releasing any additional funds to localities or not, but that's another option. All of those dollars that are going to the state as well as what the state has provided to us have to be expended by the end of this calendar year. So it's also a very tight window as to when you can actually spend those funds. But those are the funds right now that have been provided through, all of those came through the CARES Act out of Congress.
Thank you, Ms. Whiteboy, and thank you, City Manager. Let me just ask you, who's the person that administers that for us? Is that Mr. Holland?
For the CDBG and the ESG, yes, and that's actually a combination of folks. So the continuum of care folks and associated with our homeless services are involved in the ESG funding, for example. And the CDBG funding, of course, uses outside assistance as well to help us determine the best way to actually allocate those dollars. But yes, Keith Holland and his group are actually the ones that administer those programs as they do all the other CDBG programs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill Bestbitch. May I also ask a follow-up question to the city manager?
Yes, sir.
I just want to be clear, the third potential revenue source that you mentioned, will those funds also come if we receive them with? with the same sort of limitations on how they can be used?
Yes, yes. So the state of Virginia received somewhere around $2 billion as a result of the CARES Act. All of those dollars come with that same requirement, whether they're spent by the state or whether they're sent on to localities.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that what we were talking about earlier was looking for some funding from the state and federal government that we can use for our normal operations that are not restricted to only being used for the direct impact of the COVID-19.
Right. And these funds are, it is explicitly written into the legislation, actually, that these funds may not be used for the replacement of lost revenue by the locality. To your point that you were making earlier, that is also one of the points that are being raised throughout the country by localities that if there is not to be additional funding provided by Congress to assist state and local governments, then perhaps action on the dollars they've already provided to make it such that it can be used for more purposes would be beneficial.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Amelia, for your work. And there's no further inquiries on the budget study. We'll move down to the next item, and I'll call again on our City Manager.
So as you all know, of course, that this most recent gathering of the General Assembly was a productive one in the sense that a great number of bills were drafted and a fairly significant number of those became law and were signed into law by the governor. You also know that a few of those, in response to COVID, actually were deferred to a later date. So there's actually kind of two collections of bills that were approved and signed into law. Those that either require or offer some sort of council action and that have kind of a timeliness associated with them. And then likewise, those that are a bit, don't even become effective till a bit later in the year. So I recently sent to you with the help of the City Attorney's Office, I think there were six bills, I think, six new laws passed that have kind of that timeliness element to them that at some point over the next several months, we need to evaluate with the council the desire to actually act on any of those. The first one that you have is the most time-sensitive, and that's because if action is desired either to be taken or to allow to occur by the council, something has to occur before July on this particular one. So that's why you're seeing this one first is because it is the most time-sensitive. And it specifically deals with the use of electronic bikes or e-bikes on, in our case, on the greenway. So I'm going to have Michael Clark come up and explain what's included in that. And certainly between Michael, myself, and Dan, we can answer any questions that you might have about what may or may not happen as a result of action or inaction by the council and what maybe the next steps might be associated with that. But that's why you're getting this item first as we start to work our way through all of those new laws as they come into effect.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of City Council. It's good to see everyone this morning. I'm going to walk you through a very brief presentation on e-bikes, and then I will do my best to answer any questions that you might have. So a little bit of background. E-bikes, we currently prohibit the use of e-bikes on our greenway trails, which are shared use paths, whether that's a paved surface or a concrete surface, as well as natural surface trails within all of our parks. That includes all of the trails at Carver's Cove Natural Reserve. So those are held in two different areas. One in City Code in Chapter 24, Article 24-94, Article 4, Section 24-94, where it talks about the appropriate use of motor vehicles. And then an administrative policy that dates back to the late 90s. And you see the ordinance number there. That's when we first got into building greenways and how we were going to manage them. And we refer to them as linear parks that do contain trails and can be used as a trail system that's recreational in nature for non-motorized transportation. So earlier this year, the General Assembly passed House Bill 543, which, as you can see there, it further defines what e-bikes are and has them in three separate classes. It allows e-bikes on all trails and shared use paths in July if the local governments don't take action to either further prohibit or to institute some type of new law that would prohibit the use on shared use paths. So in terms of definition, unless it's operated in the public right-of-way, e-bikes are not considered motorized vehicles. So that is one of the things that we've relied on in the code language is that we have referred to them, excuse me, as motor vehicles. So this bill that the General Assembly passed says that they are only motorized vehicles when they are operated in the street. They further define the classes of e-bikes, which are well-established across the country. And there are three specific classes of e-bikes. First is a Class 1, and that's a pedal assist only, no throttle, and has a maximum assisted speed of 20 miles per hour. The Class 2 has that same assisted speed of 20 miles per hour, but it has a throttle. And then Class 3 is similar to Class 1, but the maximum assisted speed is 28 miles per hour. And on the screen now is an example of Class 1 and a Class 3 e-bike. The only difference between the two, as I mentioned before, is the maximum assisted speed. So I know it's kind of small in the picture, but you can see some of the components are labeled there. And all in all, it looks like a regular bike. The biggest difference, obviously, is the motor that you can see right there on the frame. So regardless of the maximum speed, each one of it comes with a motor that is no faster than 750 watts, which is the equivalent of one horsepower. Everything else is the same as you would see on any other bike. And here's an example, close-up of a Class 2. As I mentioned before, it's the same shape and size and makeup. The only difference is it has a throttle. There are two main types of throttle that we have identified there. One is a thumb throttle, and then the other is a twist throttle. So like the thumb throttle, you've probably seen them on the Lime scooters or something to that effect. And then a twist throttle is something you'd see conventionally on a motorcycle. So the permitted uses is outlined in House Bill 543. Beginning July 1st, all classes of e-bikes are allowed on trails and shared use paths unless prohibited by the locality. So as we mentioned, we have something already in place that currently prohibits them. The difference, though, is that Class 1 and Class 2 prohibition requires a public hearing, and then locality must demonstrate that the restriction is necessary due to a public safety concern or compliance with any other existing laws. The Class 3 prohibition doesn't not require a public hearing. So that's something that can be decided at any point without a public hearing. And then the prohibition of all classes of e-bikes, Class 1, 2, or 3, on natural surface trails also does not require a public hearing. So here are the available council actions. First, take no action at all. If we take no action, beginning July 1st, e-bikes will be permitted on all our trails and shared use paths in city parks. That would include Carver's Cove Natural Reserve. Second option is to receive public input. We can hold a public hearing, hear what our citizens have to say, and then make a decision to determine whether or not we want to allow e-bikes on greenway trails and natural surface trails. And then if we do decide to allow them, what different classes would be allowed on those trails? So our recommended next step is to authorize the scheduling of a public hearing on June 15th so that we can make a decision before the July 1 deadline. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I will start with Ms. Whiteboy and just come down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. I'm wondering if we do allow the e-bikes, you know, whether it's first, second, or third class, could we designate certain days? Which I was thinking this all along, even before they passed this law. If we could allow bikes on the greenway certain days and prohibit them on other days? We've already had issues with just the regular bikes, and then to add electric bikes into the mix, I'm afraid might create a lot of problems for the people, the pedestrians, the people that want to walk with their children and on small tricycles and things like that. But that's my question. I don't know if that's doable or feasible. And I'm certainly looking forward to June 15th to hear from the public on this matter. But that was just my initial thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Osborne. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Price. I'm sorry. Ms. Price, are you there?
I have no questions.
Okay, Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for being present today and walking us through this. I was curious, sort of in tandem with what Ms. Whiteboy was suggesting. Basically, what are other localities doing in response to this? Do you have any sort of general comparisons or general feel for things?
So unfortunately, it's a mixed bag. I wish that we had something a little bit more routine, something that we could base it off of. We have, if I had to venture, I would say there are more localities around us that are allowing them than are prohibiting them. We followed a couple of case studies over the last two years, several of which are out West, which they administer a completely different type of trail system than we do, most of which also have dedicated enforcement, whether that's as a ranger program within a park or rec department or some subsect of their police or sheriff's department. But the one closest to us that we followed is Parrybacks County. And they are moving to allow Class 1 and Class 2 on most of their shared use paths and such. This was one of those that really caught us by surprise. We didn't anticipate seeing this by the General Assembly. And so much so that in a conference call with other Parks and Recreation Directors last week, our lobbyist with the Virginia Recreation Park Society wasn't aware of the bill either. So when I asked the question, among other Parks and Recreation Directors, what they were planning on doing, the answer was either allowing them or nothing at all, which nothing at all means they're allowing them.
Yeah, I mean, how would one be able to monitor between a Class 1 and 2 and a Class 3 e-bike being on the greenway? That seems challenging.
It would be. It'd be very difficult to monitor the use. Obviously, you can look at speed, at sustained speed, as well as the use of the throttle. That's the biggest difference between Class 2 and the others is that the Class 2 is not a pedal assist. So if you see someone going really, really fast and not pedaling, then chances are they're relying on the throttle to keep them at that sustained 20 miles an hour.
Which is almost like a moped.
Yes.
So what would you anticipate needing? Or how would that change sort of the way parks and recs monitors, maintains, whatever? How would it change your practice to have e-bikes on our greenways?
Well, right now, we don't do any type of enforcement. We rely on the police department to enforce City Code. So we would have a heavier reliance on PD for that. We also rely on our Greenway ambassadors to continue to educate folks as they see it, to either report it or to talk to the individuals as they see it. But yet, it would be extremely difficult to enforce.
Sure, okay. Well, it seems like e-bikes are the thing of the future, and they're going to be here to stay. So we're going to have to figure out some way to adapt. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you for making the presentation. This is something that I've had some folks in the cycling world, I think, bringing to my attention for over a year now. The main concern originally was about having e-bikes out on the trails at Carver's Cove. And then I think now we've got more concern from folks who use the greenways on a regular basis, who are concerned about the speed with which e-bikes are able to travel, and is that going to be safe for families? To answer the question that you posed, Mr. Clark, I think the only option moving forward in my mind is to have a public hearing because there are so many people on both sides of this argument. I know most of us have probably heard from folks who are really concerned they use an electronic assist bike because of physical disability or, you know, because it's the only way that they can get out on the greenway on the bikes. And yet, it also does seem that if you allow them and you've got folks who maybe don't need them for that purpose, that you may end up with some people that are on the greenways using them irresponsibly. And so it is a very multifaceted problem. And Mike, I know it's one that, like you said, had been brought to your attention within the past year or two. And yet, now we suddenly are being forced to make a decision because of the General Assembly's actions and have to do it very quickly. So I appreciate your leadership on this. I do think to answer your question on public hearing is the only way that we'll be able to actually hear from both sides of this in order to make a well-informed decision because I do certainly see both sides. Do we have an opportunity to limit if we were to allow them in one place, like the greenways, but then limit them on dirt trails and that kind of thing? Do we have the ability to divvy up which linear parks or which parks we allow them in versus which parks they are not allowed in?
We can. It'll still come down to enforcement. And then how do we enforce that? I know that one of the largest concerns for staff or the network of trails that we have at Carver's Cove, with nearly 70 miles of trails in that one park alone, it would be extremely difficult to monitor and regulate the use of e-bikes. We know for a fact that e-bikes are on our trails and greenways now. And some folks are more blatant about their use than others. But we have all kinds of other motorized use at Carver's Cove, which presents, you know, a whole different set of issues with ATV, dirt bikes, and everything else. So but the bottom line is it would be difficult to enforce regardless of what parks we designated as available and which ones weren't.
Well, and, you know, to that point, it's difficult to enforce even if they were allowed. I mean, even if they were disallowed everywhere, it would be difficult to enforce that, is what I'm hearing you say, let alone if we then go in and make specific requirements about which parks and who and what and times and where. And the other thing that I find really difficult about this is that e-bikes are not necessarily recognizable. You know, I think people hear e-bike and they think moped, and it's not a moped. An e-bike can be as simple as having a little, you know, battery assist, you know, mounted on a down tube that is not very noticeable. And maybe to a common recreational cyclist, you wouldn't even realize that that's what it is, making the enforcement even that much more difficult. So thanks for bringing this to our attention. As I said, I do think that a public hearing is the only way that we can move forward on making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Michael. I've ridden an e-bike, and they're pretty extraordinary. I think the challenge with any bike, any motorized vehicle that's not a car, is etiquette and care, particularly in high-traffic areas. I think the bigger picture for me in all of this is how we are continuing to move forward as a city in regards to multimodal transportation. We're increasingly becoming more pedestrian-friendly. Our goal is to become more pedestrian-friendly and more cycle-friendly. And I think as more people turn to walking and public transit and bicycling and fewer cars, we're going to face some challenges as to what that looks like. We've already been hearing about some of the challenges along Brandon Road and places Campbell and Fifth, where we're having pedestrian deaths that are unnecessary. So for me, a lot of this is about the bigger picture. So like everyone else, I'm really curious to hear from the public, not only at the public hearing, but between now and then. And I really encourage the public to reach out to us as council. And I really encourage the public to reach out to us as council members by phone or by email, messenger, whatever way works for you, to share either your experience of this, your your hopes for this, your concerns for this. Um, I know a lot of people are um finding great health benefit to this, uh where they can't use uh a standard bicycle. Um, for health reasons, they're able to use an e-bike, and so I do think there are benefits to them. Um, so I look forward to hearing from our citizens on this. Uh, your input is really critical. And uh, thank you, Michael, for for your work on on bringing this to us today.
Thank you. Councilman Bestbitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, I'd certainly agree very strongly with Councilmember Davidson and uh Vice Mayor Cobb and perhaps others that scheduling a public hearing is very important, uh as well as being able to hear from uh citizens through other avenues, as as Vice Mayor Cobb has suggested. Um, ju- just to give us some sense of, you know, when we talk about a a maximum speed of twenty miles an hour or or twenty-eight miles an hour, you you know, people on foot on the greenways, to my mind, sort of fall into three different categories. People who are just walking along, people who are kind of jogging, and then people who are really running. And the bicyclists, in my experience, seem to fall into two categories. People like myself, who are out there just sort of recreational, casually biking along, uh certainly faster than than walkers and probably even joggers. Uh, but then there's the other category of bicyclists who are more competitive and and are, you know, have the have the bicycle uh garb on and all that sort of stuff, who are really moving along at a pretty good clip. And I wonder if you have any sense of of that category, i- is that generally around twenty miles an hour? Is it more than twenty miles an hour, or 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 do you, are you able to give us any input on that?
Um, I could, just anecdotal. Um, I can tell you that when I uh ride on a greenway trail with my children, um we maintain uh a speed somewhere between, you know, five and eight miles an hour, something like that, uh which is a a decent steady speed on a bike. Um, it is very easy to reach a maximum speed of twenty, twenty-five miles an hour uh on a road bike, uh regardless of where you are. The issue is being able to sustain that that speed. Um, most folks that can sustain a speed of twenty miles an hour or greater are typically riding uh in our uh rites of way, or they're going out to uh the parkway or some other rural roads where it really opens up and and traffic isn't as bad. Um, that's not to say that competitive cyclists don't use our greenway trails, uh because they do. Um, I've used them before, and and admittedly, in when in an area that is more remote, I've gotten uh pretty fast myself. Um, like I said, it's it's easy to do, but it's hard to sustain. So I would I would venture that that most cyclists uh using a greenway trail um would range anywhere from, you know, eight miles an hour to fifteen miles an hour sustaining.
Right, a- and I also, if I'm understanding correctly, there are users who are more in the twenty, twenty-five mile an hour range already. And and while that's not sustained, it really may not matter all that much to other greenway users, because once you pass me on the greenway, then it doesn't really affect me uh in terms of how long you may be sustaining that speed, correct?
Correct.
So I I I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if we already have people who are uh traveling on bicycles at in that range of speed, then uh that's certainly something for us to take into consideration. Um, just in terms of the of the logistics of this, Mr. Mayor, it seems like to me, as I say, i- it's very important for us to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the fifteenth. And then what? If we have the public hearing, uh it seems like we could either recess that meeting with the expectation of having a special meeting uh at some other point to reconvene and 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 make a decision, or could ask for the drafting of multiple ordinances with the different options out there, and which would mean we would need to have the public hearing and and pretty much have our discussion and and make a decision uh right then and there. And I I'm not advocating one or the other. I'm just trying to point out that if we have to make this decision by June thirty, then we're pretty limited in our options as to uh how we uh how we respond to whatever we hear during the public hearing a- and what do we do from that point. Uh, unless the city attorney has some other suggestion as to how to proceed, that it seems like to me that's that's kind of the option in front of us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh members of council. Um, Doug Barber in uh in our office and Michael have been working on this, and our recommendation, and you've anticipated, Mr. Bestbitch has anticipated my one comment this morning. This afternoon, um on your consent agenda, there's a request to set the public hearing. Um, no doubt that will be set. What our proposal is, is that you um propose uh the most restrictive ordinance that's advertised, to be advertised, and that would be to ban all e-bikes. Um, in this way, um you you would meet the requirements of the state code that you have a public hearing with regard to class one and class two. Um, and any other step that you take um would be less restrictive than what you've advertised. We would be prepared to bring um alternative um ordinances to you on the fifteenth as well, and we would have those drafted in advance um that may permit class one and class two, or um take some other steps with regard to that. Um, the question is, is you, if you do not wish to ban class one and class two, then no action will permit them as of July first. Um, but we think the best approach uh to respond to the um the restrictions that the General Assembly has created by uh having default on July one would be to advertise the most restrictive, so that you will be receiving comments from the public, because we will provide the ordinance to them that they will see that it's complete, a complete ban. Uh, no doubt that will generate a lot of comment on all sides of the issue and give us a a full flavor of what uh council can act with regard to that point. So our recommendation would be to advertise uh the ordinance that is the most restrictive, that does require the public hearing, um and then we can proceed from there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I I I think that uh sounds like a very uh reasonable approach and and sort of covers all the bases, so to speak. Um, I I do think that, uh, Mr. Mayor, we should keep in mind that if if it's clear at the end of the public hearing or or during our discussion following the public hearing, uh where the majority on council wants to go with this, then we can resolve it with one of the uh alternative ordinances that the city uh attorney provides us with. And at the same time, I think we should keep in mind that we always have the option, if it's not clear, if we really need some more time to think about it, if we really need some more time to perhaps hear from even additional people other than those who show up for the public hearing, that we do have the option of recessing the meeting and then reconvening uh when we feel like we we have uh given every uh position adequate consideration and not being rushed to do something uh that that may not be uh the best uh alternative. Thank you.
All right, Callahan.
Mayor, one one additional point that to to directly to what Mr. Bestbitch just stated. Um, state code does not mandate that you only get one opportunity to adopt an ordinance on prohibition. So that if the sense is to do nothing and review the matter later, um council will have that option uh to do it. It it just means that as of July one, class one and class two would be would be permitted um for that period. So that that's another option, simply to use the time period to actually assess what happens on the greenways and what happens in Carvin's Cove, and then proceed from there.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan, and uh the idea of that you mentioned, Mr. Bestbitch, as related to those ordinance, we can have all three of them prepared. And so right now, we just move to make sure we uh we get the word out that the public hearing is on July fifteen.
June. June fifteen.
June fifteenth, I'm sorry. June fifteen. Michael, anything else you have to share with us?
No, no, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and next briefing.
The third and final briefing we have for you today is actually part of your um Star City Strong Framework for Recovery. And um you all, first, I want to say thank you um to each of you, because um you hosted, um as you all know, you hosted a series of focus group meetings um with um various different stakeholders in the community, uh representing um large business organizations, small business, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, human services, hospitality, entertainment, medical health care, and arts and culture, so a broad cross-section of our our community, and you did so in about a two-week period. And um you were able, through those, to talk to approaching a hundred individuals, um and I also want to thank them for their participation. Um, I certainly, I was able to attend each one of those and found the the conversations very insightful and um also really um fairly hopeful in light of some of the circumstances that some of those folks um are actually dealing with in terms of their um own recovery efforts. Um, these these conversations, combined with the individual conversations that I know some of you have had with folks, maybe sectors as well, um are gonna, and and then we also have, as you know, the Economic Advisory Panel we have been meeting with. All of those are intended to give, if you will, kind of a snapshot of where our community is as it's about to embark on and into recovery. And that will assist um you and us in um how best to support um our community across all of its um sectors in that recovery as we go along. Um, you know, I think as we went through theirs, through those, and I know each of you have been provided the summary of all of the um notes from the meetings, that you can start to see some common themes and some common thoughts and concerns associated with those. Um, but at this time, this is really an opportunity, uh Mayor, for you and the council to sort of um brief each of your fellow council members about your particular focus group and how um that went and what you took away as kind of the key points from from your um sector. Because again, though I had the benefit of being in each one of these meetings, um most of you obviously did not. You were at the meeting that you um actually convened and conducted, um did not necessarily, the notes we provided have the benefit of having attended those. So that's the purpose of this item, is to let you all brief um one another, as well as the public, of what you heard in those meetings. And at the end of that, I'll just come back and talk about how these uh this information will be used as we proceed forward in um in working on the recovery um for the community. So with that, Mayor, um whatever order you prefer um to go in, I think they're arranged, the the notes that Tiffany has put together, they're arranged um chronologically in how the focus groups actually took place. Um, so certainly you can go in that order, or if you wish to go in a different order as well. And if you go in that order, Mayor, it was your group that was the first one.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking for those notes that Tiffany sent those notes out, the coolest.
Yeah, they're, actually, I I sent those out. They accompanied your update on Friday, so they were one of your attachments on that.
Okay. Uh, let me make sure I look at those. Let me just go down. Does anybody else want to volunteer to go first, and I'll follow that? I can do some things, but I wanted to make sure I got, make sure I mentioned everybody's a comment in my group.
Yeah, Vice Vice Mayor Cobb was the uh the host of the second focus group, if you'd like to move to that one.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bob. Um, so I convened um a conversation with faith-based organizations, which included uh represent representatives from congregations, uh local uh health care entities that are faith-based, as well as social service, human service agencies. Um, and then in addition to that, the mayor and I actually, prior to these conversations, had convened a um an opportunity for uh local clergy uh who lead congregations to begin talking about some of their challenges. So my remarks will really be based on on those multiple conversations. Um, I I think that, as as Bob mentioned, the the common themes are um, you know, in terms of impact, uh faith-based organizations draw in part a lot of their strength from being able to gather, to be together in uh whether it's in a worship setting um or uh an educational setting or just social support. And so so one of the significant impacts is the ceasing of those gatherings, other than uh drive-in or uh smaller than groups of ten people with physical distancing. That has, of course, uh demanded of them uh a pretty quick study on how to create and sustain online uh activities. Um, it it has challenged um the way in which giving looks or financial support. Uh, it's also challenged uh the ability to sustain uh brick-and-mortar facilities. We heard from a number of congregations in particular who uh have relatively recently invested in property and are concerned from a multiple angles, A, what is that gonna look like as people do start to return? Uh, will people return in in the numbers that they were previously? And um what will that then look like in terms of financial support? So I I think uh some of our newer uh congregations are are looking at those challenges. Uh, we heard, we heard some concern about access to uh reliable and affordable internet service. Uh, we heard from several congregations that they were uh being asked to sign five-year minimum contracts uh for internet service. And while there is uh competition, more competition now in in the valley, um this is gonna be a growing concern uh as to how to make sure that uh faith-based organizations have access to internet service, um reasonably priced, accessible, uh with ongoing training opportunities for um the, you know, advancement of these these online services. I think the general concerns that we heard about reopening were um access to PPE. What does that look like ongoing? Access to uh sanitation uh and cleaning supplies, and how often to do that? I want to thank the, our local um Department of Emergency Management, and particularly Chief uh Trevor Shannon, uh for gating list of things to do for uh cleaning in in local businesses and facilities, as well as uh congregations. That's been very helpful. Uh, as I said, access to internet, um uh what are best practices in terms of safety? Uh, keeping in mind all of the risks that that continue to be present, how can people return um in meaningful ways, but also uh safe distancing ways? Uh, many of our congregations um and our long-term care facilities, of course, uh are hyper-aware of the vulnerable population of seniors and what that looks like. Many seniors are just making the decision not coming back until there's a vaccine. Um, others are being very, very restrictive at this point, but also beginning to measure out how to reduce some of those restrictions while honoring uh best health practices uh in in caring for for more people. Um, I guess the the other thing I would add is um the physical impact um that we heard from a lot of clergy and um leaders of of these social service agencies is um just just what the shift feels like, going from being together to trying to stay connected while being apart, and how to take uh gentle and necessary steps to uh come back together and what that looks like. Um, the impact of that is extraordinary. Um, to tell congregations and choirs that it's it's a best practice, at least for the next year or two, not to sing congregantly, i- is a huge loss. So I I think we, while we need to be aware of these challenges and how we can support them, um we also need to be aware of the social impact that that this is making on congregations, health care organizations that are faith-based, and social service programs, particularly after that are faith-based and social service programs, particularly after-school programs that really are dedicated to bringing people together to enhance their life experience. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me that opportunity to share an overview.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb. And I do agree with you. One of the things that I might add, if we were talking with some of the faith-based ministers is the increasing, and you alluded to with the cable contracts, but the increased use of technology. Some of our churches, some of the pastors, they're a little ways behind the curve on that. They need some support and help in, in doing a lot of things, even though I see now on the Sundays, a lot of them appearing on the, doing virtual services and they're doing either streaming them or doing different things to make sure they get the word out. But just notice in terms of technology, some are a little uncomfortable with how fast we're moving there. And maybe at some point we could talk to them or have some type of training session to help them as they move forward in this new normal that we have. And, and I'm hoping that some of the specialist smaller churches can, can come back. There's a possibility because of the COVID-19 that those churches may not be in a position to come back, especially from a financial standpoint. But thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, anyone else ready to make their report?
Mayor, Councilmember White Boyd had the next group, which was with the small businesses.
All right. Councilmember White Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we, you know, small businesses was a really interesting gathering of folks because, you know, small business can be 100 to 500 people. And so that was a lot of different small businesses. So we did our best to try to, you know, get some people in, get them in on the call. It was hard to reach a lot of them because they weren't working. They were, you know, actually out of the office, all the businesses were closed. So I managed to get a couple of hairstylists because they were mostly impacted. And, and I got a gentleman from Valley Boiler, Liberty Taxes, Diane Speaks from She's International, and I invited several popular restaurants who were not able to attend because they were quite busy. So the restaurants seemed to have done okay with the exception of their employees. I think that's where their challenges were, is that they weren't able to pay, you know, their servers and everything. But because of the fact that the governor allowed the sale of alcohol, a lot of the restaurants maintained. I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't get any of them to even come on because they were so busy. But I will say that the, the hairstylist that I spoke to, one, for example, was Z Salon and Spa. And I think most of you are familiar with Z Salon and Spa. They're right next to Red Lobster and they've been around for a while. She did okay because of the fact that her business model differs from a lot of the other business models in, in the fact that she has employees. So they were able to apply for unemployment. That was huge. And I asked her to come on and have this conversation with us because I wanted her to share that concept with the other stylists because most of the other stylists does what they call booth rent. They rent the booth and, you know, everybody's kind of on their own and they, they share some of the expenses. Those are the stylists that were having the most difficulty. And so they didn't qualify for the PPP loans because they really didn't have employees. They were on their own and they did, you know, their own tax filings. So they are going to, excuse me, they're going to have a really difficult time. They are having a difficult time. And, you know, there was really not a lot out there for them. A couple of them I suggested that they contact, you know, tap to see if they qualified for the micro loan. And I'm not sure how that went, but we do have to kind of look out for our, our salons and our stylists because they had a really, really difficult time. And in addition to having a difficult time, they had to get ready for the reopening and purchase supplies. The supplies tripled. You know, all of their cleaning supplies, all of that stuff tripled. And they have to go through the salons after each client. And keeping in mind, they, they, at one time, they could have five, 10 clients at one time. Now they're only able to have two or three because of the distancing. And then the fact that they've got to go in after each one to do this thorough cleaning. And a lot of them had to get the shields that you've seen in the stores. They've had to get the Plexiglas. So they are probably one of the ones that are struggling the most right now. When I talked to Stella Carpenter at Liberty Tax, she was impacted because of the extension of the tax filing deadline. So that means that she has to keep her staff working for an additional two to three months when they would be wrapping up everything toward, you know, the end of April, the end of May. And she was still in the process of trying to get the PPP loan, which we all know that that might have been a hit or miss. So she was having a really difficult time, but she is still open for business, but she's limited like everybody else as to the number of people or customers that she can service at one time. So she's chugging along. But Gary Gerald at Valley Boiler was considered essential because he installs boilers at hospitals, you know, restaurants. He, he never missed a beat, kind of like my business. You know, I have a small business. My home health agency is definitely essential, providing care to the elderly. We never closed. We never, you know, my aides didn't, didn't get a break. The only thing that I wanted to do was to try to, you know, pay hazard pay. So fortunately, at, at the end there, just last week, I was able to get the PPP loan, which, you know, enabled me to keep them employed and to try to increase their pay to hazard pay. So that helped me. As for Diane Speaks downtown, she, she was having a really rough time because she wasn't getting any business. They had to close, but like a lot of the other small businesses, they still had to maintain their rent, the lights, et cetera, et cetera. All these things still had to be paid. A couple, this one lady that had a wedding planning business, you know, had some contracts with downtown, with Affair in the Square, whatever. I forgot what you called the, the, the market building and some of the other places that still wanted those fees paid, those commitments kept because they still had to pay their, their obligations. And I think they came to some terms with that. I'm not sure what the resolution was, but like all of the rental spaces, they still wanted you to honor your contract because they still had to honor some contracts. So the small businesses were really, really having a, a difficult time. I will say that of all of the small businesses in our area, looking at small businesses, the restaurants were the ones that were able to maintain the best as far as the business and the impact fell on their staff. So that was the gist of our conversations. But anyway, just keep in mind, I think most of the stylists, the hair salons and clothing shops and things like that are the ones that were hardest hit. So once they open back up, we'll be sure to patronize them. And thank you, Mayor. I think that was it. I don't know if Mr. Cowell wants to add something.
No, no, thank you. I was just going to let the mayor know that the, the next conversation that was held was actually with Ms. Osborne with Medical and Healthcare.
Ms. Osborne.
Thank you so much. And my internet seems to be going in and out, so I'm just going to keep talking regardless. Someone will have to signal to me if, if it is not, if you can't hear me. I really enjoyed this. Thank you very much, Bob and Tiffany, for setting these up and for all of your support as we, during the meetings and then compiling all the notes afterwards. It was great for me to have this experience and interact with the community in a way that I might not otherwise have been able to. The group that I addressed was healthcare and that was comprised of behavioral health with Blue Ridge Behavioral Health and Dr. Janine Evans of Mosaic Mental Wellness and Health. We also had the dental industry represented with Dr. Lampros. We had physical therapy represented with Wendy Lucas and Lucas Therapies. Carillion was represented there as well. And Hal Irvin with Virginia Tech, Frayland Biomedical Research Institute was also there. So it was a, it was a nice sort of broad spectrum of, across the industry. And there were some common themes and there were some sort of unique challenges within each of those. One of the main common themes was acquiring PPE and the fact that that is going to be the new normal and is going to be the necessary way going forward for, for Carillion. That's pretty standard to have PPE and access to it. That was not the case for, say, Blue Ridge Behavioral Health. They're not accustomed to having PPE for behavioral health interactions. So that is an increased cost for them. It is an increased concern and it is a new way to sort of navigate their, their client relationships as well as their, their administration, you know, employees having to don PPE. Another common theme across the board was the relax, relaxation of regulations that allowed for telehealth and alternative means of treatment and therapy besides one-to-one. My experience was just as a, having a private practice was that, that conversion to telehealth for me was relatively easy because I had systems in place. That was not the case for, across the board, for every industry. There was increased cost. There was, you know, educating clients about what telehealth is, making sure that they have access to it. I think once telehealth was established, it allowed for, in some cases, greater access to clients who would not have had the opportunity to, to travel or other barriers to treatment. And, and we all kind of noted across the board that we seem to have a greater show rate when clients had access to telehealth, which I thought was really interesting and something to consider as we move forward in the new normal. How will we, how will we and all the providers that were able to integrate telehealth? How will that become a normal part of practice in medicine and healthcare going forward? One of the big themes around that as well went beyond local and to advocating for continued relaxation or adjustment of those regulations that had prohibited telehealth historically or had not even addressed it at all. For the Bradley Free Clinic, they too have gone to telehealth. They've seen some benefits of that. Their big concern was their volunteer pool and how to reintegrate volunteering back into their practice because they are a pretty mu, they have a core staff, but so much of the services that they, they offer are through volunteer work. So that was one of the main things that they had to face with physical therapy. This was sort of a theme that Ms. Trish White Boyd was talking about with hairstylists. Now they, now that the regulations are in place about how we have to function in limited numbers, the degree of, and is, is required in between patients, clients, whoever it is that we're dealing with, with the general public, they now have to, have had to extend their hours so that they can accommodate either the same amount or fewer clients because of all that is required with social distancing and sanitization. So having to make accommodations for their practice, that has resulted in some loss of revenue and not being able to have the volume output that they previously did. How Irvin with Virginia Tech addressed sort of the higher education piece, how higher education will continue, what that will look like, the fact that they host conferences and, and the larger impact on the hospitality industry for them not being able to do that at this point in time, having to postpone or suspend those kinds of activities. And then of course, the dental industry, which does not have sort of a plan B for how they treat patients. They have to be face-to-face. And one of the main concerns there was the lack of clear-cut guidelines across the board for the dental industry about what to do and what not to do and how individual practices are having to sort of interpret their understanding of rules and regulations and how they are going to have that play out in their practice. And I did ask Dr. Lampros, who's now retired, but who had had access to her colleagues for some of the information that she shared, what the likelihood would be that some of these dental practices would fold because they just were not able to sustain the stress of coronavirus and all that is required. And I certainly had heard anecdotally, just through friends and just otherwise, that a number of providers across the, the board of medicine dentistry have taken, you know, have chosen to retire when it wasn't necessarily what they were planning to do this year. Just because it just was maybe easier or felt like the better choice for them versus having to sort of chart this new territory. And then of course, I, Dr. Nottingham, who worked it in the assisted living industry, was talking about the consequence to seniors, the isolation that has occurred as, to protect their health, seniors have not been able to interact with others, with family, and, and kind of the mental health consequence of that. And he suggested, which I so appreciated, reminding people to, to reach out in the ways that we can to one another, to force those relationships, to kind of have that continued support to anyone who might be vulnerable and, and make that, and maybe limited inability to, to access people even with social, even with social distancing and all of the precautions that sort of the less vulnerable populations are, are able to do and still manage kind of distanced relationships. I thought that was really important and I figured that that could be a concept that could be applied across the board. But I really found this to be very informative and I, I really, I really, really enjoyed this. I, I enjoyed hearing some of the common themes. I enjoyed hearing some of the unique challenges and figuring out the ways that we as a city can pay attention to those and do what we can to help these, these businesses and industries continue to survive and eventually thrive throughout this new normal of coronavirus. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, the, the next group was actually Mr. Best Pitch's group, which dealt with hospitality and entertainment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I certainly want to thank Mr. Cowell for coming up with this idea and getting us all involved. In the beginning, I, I thought it was a great opportunity for people to come together and talk about their situations and to understand that, that the city is sensitive to their challenges that they're all facing right now. And of course, also to Ms. Bradbury for helping to, to staff it. Our group got together a week ago, Friday, on the 22nd, and that included Robin Schoen from the Bergman Civic Center, Brian Wells from Hotel Roanoke, Landon Howard with Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, Cyrus Pace with the Jefferson Center, Elliot Broyles from the Roanoke Market Building, Bruce Bryan with Spot On Kirk and Five Points Creative, which is the, actually the new name of, of his business, Larry Landall with Tour Roanoke and the Hotel Roanoke Spa, the Salt Spa that's just ready to open over there, Mark Baldwin with Blue Ridge Catering, Tommy Page with New Focus and J.D. Sutphen with Big Lick Entertainment. There were some others who were not able to participate with us during the Zoom meeting that we had. So I was able to contact Sonny Shaw and Diane Haley by telephone afterward and get some input from them, which has also been included with the notes. Mr. Shaw, as you know, is a hotelier with the Ramada as well as other properties in our area. And of course, his Ramada hand down on Franklin was especially hard hit during the flooding situation that we had. So we were certainly very sympathetic towards him, his situation. And Diane Haley is with And Diane Haley is with the Roanoke Boutique Hotel, bed and breakfast type property in Old Southwest. And I got a return call from Ian Fortier at the Grandin Theater, who had already seen the notes with the comments from everyone else. And essentially said that he thought his experience had pretty well been represented in what other folks had said. So I encouraged him to, to send an email back if he had other thoughts he wanted to have added. And, and I didn't hear further from him. So I think that's covered. I, I was, to be candid, I, I was a little apprehensive about this because, as we all know, the entertainment and hospitality industry, not just in our community, pretty much across the board, is being hit as one of the hardest current impacts. And, and one of the areas that is probably going to open up the latest after everything else. I mean, essentially, there are no sporting events being even scheduled right now. There are no concerts or conferences coming to hotels and, and that sort of thing. And, and pretty much across the board, people were saying that they really don't expect any significant resumption of those types of activities until the end of this calendar year, until the beginning of 2021, really. So they are really impacted in, in far greater than many other segments of our economy. And of course, locally and around the country. Some of them are coming up with some very creative ideas, which really impressed me a lot. And overall, I would say, even though I, I was sort of apprehensive about this, I was very impressed with the overall optimism and enthusiasm that they expressed about being able to hold things together, being able, being ready to try innovative and creative new approaches. Blue Ridge Catering, for example, is doing a lot more takeout or delivery of meals as opposed to events where, where there are large gatherings of people. So they are finding ways to adapt. They're finding ways to, to recreate themselves in some situations. And I just found that very, very encouraging. And again, as I say, just the overall attitude. There was not a lot of gloom and doom or complaining, but saying, we're going to make it. We're staying optimistic and, and we're staying hopeful for the future. And I, I just found that very encouraging. So I, I won't go into all of the comments that various people made in detail as the notes have been available to, to each of us. And I understand after this meeting, the notes will be made available to the public at large for people who want to hear more about it. But I, I would just say, you know, if, if you can, if, if you're a sponsor, anybody who has, has been a sponsor through their business or whatever, to please consider maintaining those sponsorships if at all possible. If you're a season ticket holder, buy your season tickets. Don't, don't just skip this year because the events are not there. As others have indicated, all of these businesses and organizations continue have, to have costs that they must cover. They have bills that they have got to pay. So if you're in a position, whether it's through the use of some of your, your stimulus check that you got, $1,200 or whatever, think about these organizations and, and try to do what you can to support them. And I'm sure as, you know, in the restaurant business that Ms. White Boyd was talking about. Find some gift certificates right now that you can either use later on or that you can use as gifts for other people will really help those businesses a lot. So I hope that everybody will think about ways that you can continue to support all of our local businesses. But in particular, of course, from my perspective, the hospitality and entertainment segment of our economy, which is, is really essentially shut down. Hotel Roanoke is very, very hopeful that as people do begin to travel again, they'll get more leisure travelers. But business traveling is, is definitely down. Conference attendance is, is pretty much completely shut down at this point. So, you know, if, if you have friends around the, around the state or really around the country who are looking for a good place to come and wants to feel safe to travel again, especially if they can just travel in their own car and avoid crowds, Roanoke is a great place for them to come. Stay a couple of nights in, in one of our hospitality facilities. Take advantage of whatever entertainment is, is there. And a lot of it, of course, is online these days. So I hope everyone is taking advantage of those opportunities as well. And Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll just close my remarks and, and we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. The, the next group was probably the, is probably the busiest group out of all of the ones that we talked with. And this was led by Councilmember Davis and was the, included the Human Services and Nonprofits Group.
All right. Thank you so much, Mary Lee, and thank you, Mr. Cal. Yeah, the, the Human Services Group, I would say that the, the theme on our conversation is that all of the folks in Human Services have probably been putting in longer hours, working harder with less resources than any of us have ever worked in, in, in the recent past that anybody can remember. We had an incredible group represented on our call. I think we had 13 folks that, that joined us. And we had folks across all aspects of Human Services. We had folks who are currently serving food. We had folks who are, you know, working on homelessness. Folks who are working with all areas of, of our population who are currently really feeling the effects of COVID. And just to summarize it, you know, the overarching concern, I think, for most of our groups is what happens after June 30th. For some folks, it's, it's even sooner. It's what happens after the end of this week. But now that we're entering into June, one of the great parts about stimulus package that came out from Congress was that nonprofits were able to apply for COVID relief. And, and that's very unusual, being able to apply as a nonprofit for PPP and the EIDL loans were really important. And it was a shared sentiment that most of the folks on the call felt like, you know, the months of May and June were really, we, we kind of had coverage because of the availability of the funds. For most folks, if you apply for a PPP loan in the first round, your PPP loan is running out this week into the beginning of next week. Now, you've got to think, there was an eight-week time period in which you are able to use the PPP loan. So over the course of the next four weeks, we're going to start to see our human service providers running out of that PPP funding. And so now the question becomes, how do you keep people employed? How do you keep providing service? How do you keep, you know, giving people opportunities to work? And, and one of the main concerns is that for most of us who require fundraising in order to do the operations, our fundraisers have been canceled. So if you had a fundraiser that started since April, fundraisers have been canceled through the end of the year. So much like Bill was saying with the entertainment industry, you know, there is no, for a lot of us, there's no rescheduling of these events. If that was something that was at Hotel Roanoke, you know, you can see the, the trickle-down effects into the other agencies and into the other areas. But for a lot of us, you know, the funding that we raise in the spring that then supplies the resources for summer and fall programming, that funding is gone. And the PPP and the emergency relief ends in June. And so there is no future forecast for what July, August, September are going to look like for our local human service agencies. So it's a big, it is, it is weighing really, really heavily on all of the leaders of our local human service agencies as to how are we going to continue to provide service once, once things start opening back up. With the unemployment rate being where it's at right now, we forecast that the need for food in particular is going to continue on for years to come. The need for, you know, there were several after-school childcare providers, so similar to their concept with, with our, with our religious affiliated after-school centers. The other after-school care providers, Head Start, early childcare and childcare centers in general, there have been a lot of provisions that were made early on to try and keep those places open for essential workers. There weren't necessarily, we didn't see a huge demand for, for essential workers for childcare. Most people we found who were in, especially in the healthcare field who have kids, they didn't feel comfortable with their kids potentially being exposed within their home, sending them to an outside facility. And so they were taking care of a lot of their childcare needs kind of internally. And so there wasn't a lot of childcare needs in the past two months. Well, now people are starting to go back to work and the childcare needs are going to ramp up. And funding is starting to run dry because funding was always created on this emergency basis. A lot of the human service agencies were able to take advantage of grant programs, emergency grant programs, and great opportunities to receive unrestricted funds, which is highly unusual in the human services world. Even funding that maybe you had already received or that had already been promised, that was restricted to a specific program, knowing that that program wasn't going to exist in its same form. A lot of the funders removed the restrictions and made it possible for us to continue doing the work over the course of the past few months. But there, nobody, we don't see any funders or any grant opportunities or any local agencies that have availability of funds in even the second half of the year, let alone Q4 and then Q1 of 2021. So people are really scared in human services agencies. We know that the services that are being provided are, are, are necessary to support people during this time. There has been money in the short term and there is no long-term funding in place that's going to help us. And there is no opportunity for us to make up for lost funding. It's, it's as if the, the money that's been available has been targeted for immediate emergency use. And we have all done that. And all of these agencies have put it to great use and have kept people afloat and have provided food and have made sure that kids have opportunities and access and internet and the things that they needed in order to, to kind of wrap up the school year. And now we're running into the summer and everybody's really scared. So I think, you know, much, to, to my fellow councilmembers, we can relate to what we're seeing as a city with our own funding. And knowing that, you know, we don't know what the future looks like. We don't know how long the tail of this lasts. And for the human service nonprofits in our area who sometimes rely on city funding, like TAP, you know, we all know, we've all heard from, from our friends at TAP, knowing that all of the funding across the board is going to start going down. Knowing that as people continue to lose their jobs, we're seeing bankruptcies being filed nationally every single day. As the unemployment rate continues to grow, as the need for service continues to grow, there is no future plan for how any of that is going to be funded. Now, the one thing that I will point out that I think is critically important is that with the passing of the CARES Act, there is an opportunity for people, if you are making donations to a local nonprofit, those donations are now above the line. So you can actually make those donations and you can deduct them from your, your taxable income prior to taking any other kind of standard deductions. And that's been a change that is really positive. And it makes giving, for those who are still employed, for those who do still have the opportunity to give, it makes giving more financially beneficial to the individual donor. But I don't even know that that word has spread far and wide. That's up to each individual agency to spread that word to their individual donors. And that's not going to make up for the corporations who can no longer afford sponsorship. So again, back to Mr. Best Pitch, the two, the, a lot of the fundraising in the human services world is very tied to the entertainment and, you know, various types of fundraisers and auctions and those kinds of things. And we rely a lot on corporate sponsorship. And we're starting to see our corporate, you know, brothers and sisters really struggle as well. And so from the human agents, human service agency standpoint, we don't know what the future holds. And when I say the future, I mean the immediate future, beginning now, June 1. We don't know what it holds. So in all, I will tell you that your human service leaders in this region are, are in the city specifically, are working tirelessly. They are the most creative group. People have figured out how to provide service even when it can't be face-to-face. Virtual, family services is being, is providing virtual mental health. We've got, you know, TAP that's still doing some of their, like Youth Build and some of their programs. Not only are they providing virtual programming as well and limited in-person programming, but they're also teaching and providing food for those folks, knowing that they, they need some supplemental help at this time, too. And we just really see a group that is scrappy and that's figuring out how to do what they can and pivot the same way that our, our small businesses in the area have pivoted in the best way they know how. But the future is really terrifying.
Ms. Price had the Arts and Culture Group. And so Ms. Price, I believe you're still, you're still on and joining via phone. So if you wanted to provide your, your overview.
All right, Ms., Ms. Price? Okay, it doesn't seem like she's with us. So I can go ahead and talk about big business. All right, let me, and I got a lot to say, but I won't hold you long on this. But I want to echo the sentiments that Councilman Best Pitch made about these business, the business group. And I went in this thinking that I'm going to get an airfall now from the guys. But it was just the opposite of the large business organizations. And the people that were there were Burglum, Otto, William Farrell, Valerie Brown from Williamson Road, Tina Workman from DRI, Bob Willis, the CFO of Branch Engineering Construction, Amanda Allen, Allison McGee from Kroger Mid-Atlantic, Vance Overstreet from Northwest Hardware, Michael Hamler from Hamler Curtis Funeral Home, Jeff Meadows from Mass General Store, which are yet to open here in Roanoke. But he, he was present with us. And Cameron Johnson, Magic City Ford, and Doug Bonney, Bonney, from Valley View Mall. And they were very enthusiastic, were optimistic about what's going to happen. And they have seemingly adjusted to the situation. An example, when I talked to them about the impacts that they felt during COVID-19, really, it was, it was, you know, they had to go with it. It wasn't, they had to make some changes. And of course, in the, in the, as an example, in the Burglum business, the car business, auto business, it was very difficult at first to get out and meet customers and sell cars, especially with the pandemic and the requirements to wear face masks. But they didn't allow that to stop them. They had to change all the business. They would bring the car to you. They would make sure that you were able to see the car you wanted. So it changed up a little bit of, of their procedures. But they were very, very pleased with how that went. And, and to be honest with you, sales didn't drop that much. It really didn't drop that much. About, it was off in certain circles, but it increased. And, and there was a, a, a low drop, but not much. They felt that customer service got better. Frustrated, the service shop was out of business. The people weren't driving cars, not out of business, but they had to furlough in some cases and lay some people off there, but not much. Business picked up. And even with Cameron, with Magic City Ford, in the month of April, and I'm trying to scroll to that, he sold 200 cars. So they adjusted very, very well. So they adjusted very, very well. Valerie is pretty much with Williamson Road. The businesses, they have a lot of restaurants and a lot of businesses there. And she wanted to make sure that we talk a lot about and make sure it pays where the people can continue to come by those restaurants. A lot of carryout and that, that helped, that has helped them. But they're preparing and looking forward to getting back in business. And so she's very supportive of what we're doing, recognizing that it's something that we have to do. And so, again, a very enthusiastic group about, hey, we're going to make it. We talked a lot with Jeff Meadows from Mass General. They started with about 550 employees in all of their stores, not only, not here, but in the other stores. And they felt that, that business was going to get better, but this was part of it. And he was there to lend support to the efforts. They had about 550 employees a month ago. We had our meeting early on. We had it on the 13th of May. And they're opening local stores incrementally to learn along what looks, what works and what may need to change, but very positive. Kroger, which is an essential business, and they had a dramatic increase in business because of other businesses' closures. And their focus has been on contractors, contractors shopping, which was in a high demand. And I think the quick lick shopping, home delivery business was picking up. And they brought on employees and they're very pleased with that. And they've been doing some, some very positive things in the community with the store. Matter of fact, they're going to be paying some bonuses for the work that they've had. And they had the out-front people being very cooperative with gloves, masks, cleaning, the baskets. And so they've been going, working pretty well. Things are coming on. And I'm trying to find Mr. Hamler, Hamler and Curtis, that has some problems with regards to the funeral business and how they were caught up a little bit with instructions on not getting a lot of clear instructions in their business. And they were classified as essential. And there have been, there have been some positive cases among their workforce. And they're focused on keeping his workforce safe. And they issued some guidance. And some of that sometimes was conflicting from the state and leading to challenges. But their ability to work through that is good. They're very positive about what they're doing. Sad business is tough because you've got to now tell families they can't see mom or dad. You can only have 10 people in a facility at a place. And that's kind of tough. But they were able to adjust through that. And, and so business is coming away. Vance Overstreet with Northwest Hardware, Robert Willis Branch Group, and especially Tina Workman with DRI. And as you noticed, if you went down through the city last, the last few days, and once we started phase one of opening, they began to set tables out in the areas downtown where people come. Restaurants are opening outside. That's beginning a positive twist. They have actually began to have incentives for people to come and shop there that I think has helped the business downtown. And they encourage everybody to come down and be a part of what's going on in the city down there, downtown. So overall, I was very pleased with the commitment and the optimism that everybody had. They've had to make some adjustments. And they had to deal with staff to a degree, but nothing major. And the mall, Doug is saying that his problem will be to get people to come back to the mall. And then wearing masks in the mall. He was concerned about enforcing certain things if it doesn't happen. They're going to take some of the tables up in the food areas to try to stay within the physical distancing requirements. And, but they're cleaning it up. He wants more workers to come to help sanitize. There are a lot of things you've got to write off and work in the mall. And he's hoping to get some of those people back. So overall, good, they were very appreciative of us coming out and talking with them. I got to make a lot of friends with some I knew already. But they were appreciative that council was doing this citywide. It made a difference. It made them feel that we do care, which I emphasize to them, that we want to know how it impacted them and then what some of the challenges they face. And they all faced challenges, but nothing that they could not overcome. So they're ready to go forward and they're appreciative of our concern. All right.
Mayor, I was going to check one more time to see if Ms. Price happened to be there and wanted to report on the Arts and Culture Group.
All right. Anita, you there?
Okay, it takes me a minute to transfer back and forth. Yes, we met Friday and had a very candid conversation with several members of the Arts and Culture community. We had Doug and Jim Sears and, oh goodness, I'm trying to remember who else. Brooke from Opera Roanoke. And basically, just had an opportunity to talk about the impact that having to be closed has had on not only performances, but just being open to the community. And certainly have been able to get some innovative new ideas of how to connect with the community. Of course, one of the biggest impacts, as with everyone, is on income. And as far as moving forward, there are several items that will begin to, you know, that we will all take into consideration, looking at some of the data points for how to safely reopen to the community, definitely what information is needed to make that happen. And one huge variable that has to be taken into consideration of what costs will be incurred as far as PPE and safety measures and those kinds of things. So overall, a very good conversation and one that I know we will continue in the future.
Okay.
Again, I wanted to thank each of you for leading those. You know, I know from listening to the folks that participated and even some of those that have followed up since then, they certainly valued their opportunity to participate in those meetings. And we certainly at the staff level valued what we've learned from those conversations. And did want to share with you, you know, the next step in this process is part of what you'll consider your 2:00 meeting, which is the formation of the Recovery Task Force, which is kind of this next piece of engaging the community in this recovery effort. And the notes that you all that have come from these focus group meetings along with the work that we're doing with the Economic Advisory Panel as well as just the other kinds of data that are out there in the community will form kind of the foundation for the work of that Recovery Task Force. So these efforts will help inform what it is that they then start working on as they go through their efforts with the task force. So these will live on. As a couple of you have mentioned, these notes, there's a couple, a few things we need to clean up a bit on the notes, but they'll be posted up on the Star City Strong sub-page on the city's webpage with all the other COVID information that is on there as well. So folks that want to take a look at any of those in more detail will certainly be able to do so. And that's where those will be housed. And again, I want to thank you and I also want to make sure that I thank Tiffany, who scrambled along with Melinda and Tanya in our offices to make sure we got all the invitations to everyone and got them all scheduled. And then relatively seamlessly hosted Zoom meetings with all of these folks as we went through. So very much appreciate that and appreciate the effort as well. So with that, Mayor, that concludes our briefings. And I believe Dan wants to point something out for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, at this point, if there's no other business, you should recess and everybody should have the telephone information to connect to the closed meeting.
Get that out again, eh?
Okay, we will, I will send, as soon as we den, we'll send it to you by email. So you'll have that. The other point I would think is because we're going to be not coming back until 2:00 that you can disconnect from this Zoom meeting and then reengage that this afternoon at 2:00. Sometime before, but like at 1:45 so we can get everybody all set for that.
Okay.
Okay, so as soon as I get back to my office, you'll have another email with the call-in information.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The council meeting will now stand in recess until 2:00 PM session for some closed meetings that we'll have. And let's say about 11:15, we'll get back, come back in the closed session.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
Sorry, it's Michelle Davis. I did just want to let everyone know, the information for the closed meeting, the phone number was sent out by Mr. Callahan on May 30. So if you're looking through your email, that information was sent on May 30. And you have the telephone number and the access code in your email.
Okay.
And I'll resend that email just for everybody's convenience. One other point that you will get this afternoon, I don't know if we've discussed it yet, but as you're aware, the city manager did declare another state of emergency on Saturday, May 30 in the evening. You need to ratify that action. That will come up as item 10B as envoy in the Saturday's agenda. The measure should be ready to send to you. And so we'll send that by email as well. So you'll have that at the 2:00 session.
Okay, thank you. All right, we recess till about 11:15. Thank you.